Welcome, everyone. Today is May 10th, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park. Zoning Board of Adjustment Chairman Abelloni, would you please call us to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Posture and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east or west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cell phone to please mute them for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AT TV. Please call us to order, Irene.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Brittany Drumlock.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Bonnie Knop is absent. John Spolley.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
And Christopher Abelloni.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Irene. All right, we just have some, a few housekeeping issues. First, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2022.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Christopher Abelloni and a second by Daniel Harris. All eligible in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes of March 22nd, 2022 memorialized.
All right, I'll need a motion for April 12th.
Minutes?
Yes.
Minutes, yes.
I'll second.
Wait, Irene, I'm sorry, is that City by the C?
It is. I'm sorry.
So there's only one, one of two of you, right?
Yeah.
Are, is that enough to?
There's three.
Three, there are three.
There is three, okay, okay, we're good. All right. So all eligible.
Wait, wait. Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Thank you. I have a motion by Brittany Drumlock and a second by Tim Slick. All eligible in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes memorialized of April 12th, 2022.
All right, and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 26th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Christopher Abelloni and a second by Brittany Drumlock. All eligible in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes of April 12th, I'm sorry, April 27th, 2022.
26th.
Oh, the date is wrong, I'm so sorry. April 26th, 2022. In favor, I'm sorry, approved, thank you.
Thank you, Irene. All right, 503 Eighth Avenue, continuation. Mr. Harris, it's your show.
If I may, Andrew Harris from the firm of Fox Rothschild on behalf of the applicant 503 Eighth Ave, LLC. What I want to do is just go through where we left off at the last hearing and what we're going to continue with tonight.
Just a quick recap of what was done last meeting, it would be great, Mr. Harris.
That's exactly where I'm going to go with it. At the last meeting, we presented our application. We had touched more than.
One second, Mr. Harris. Russell is, had missed the first meeting for this application, and he did watch the video.
So I need to sign an affidavit, I believe?
Yes.
Did you bring it with you or do you need one?
I need one.
Okay, I will print it right now.
Thank you.
We can continue.
Yes.
Yeah, we can continue, as long as he represents.
I watched the video last night in total.
I was, you know, I was going to ask, is there anyone else who wasn't here last time? Because I was not here.
It's just Russell.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry for that, Mr. Harris.
It's quite okay. The, as a recap, the property that we're talking about is 503 Eighth Ave. It's Lot 3, 703 Lot 4. It's a very large lot, 24,450 square feet, a multifamily residential dwelling situated there. There's a main house, Carrick's house, and also maison de chaise. There's testimony presented by Mr. Hopkins, our engineer, who also served as our planner and does serve as our planner, as to the proposal to subdivide the property and then have another lot which is fully conforming for a residential, single-family home. The property is in the R1 zone. We went through a significant amount of testimony at the last hearing, and one of the real issue, I think the remaining issue that came up had to do with the portico, and whether or not that can in a sense be reconstructed or rebuilt to allow access and egress as opposed to removing it from the property. We do have an architect here tonight who will provide testimony. We are able to reconstruct that, put that onto the house, and will provide testimony of architectural plans that have been submitted. Few other revisions that were requested or suggested by the board having to do with the parking area that we have accommodated will provide some testimony as to what was done with regard to that. And with that, I'd like to get started with the application.
Please.
Thank you.
Do you re swear me or reaffirm me? Yeah, if you could just state your name for the record. Sure, Walter Hopkins. And you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. Thank you.
Mr. Hopkins, at the last hearing, there were certain comments that were made by a number of the board members with regard to, or suggestions with regard to the property. Do you recall those?
Yes, I do.
And did you make revisions to your plans and also to a rendering to reflect those revisions that we have here tonight?
Yes, we did.
Let's get right to that.
Before Mr. Hopkins proceeds, just a quick question to Mr. Harris. Mr. Siegel is not attending tonight?
He cannot be, at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'll be referring to is a color rendered version of our plan submitted to the board, last revised April 6th, 2022. It's a color rendered version of the site plan with the aerial information overlay. I have reduced versions, so if somebody doesn't want to reduce, crane their necks, whatever is best.
Let's mark there, so I think we're on to a re-presentation? Eight, two? All right.
Just eight, two.
Eight, two.
That seems like a little light.
For me, it is.
Yeah, it does. I believe my.
That was the original thing. So these are eight, two, these are the renderings, right? Take a look at what's marked as eight, two, go on.
I'll just briefly, as Mr. Chair requested, go through the changes or improvements that we made to our plans from the last meeting. We did slightly reduce the impervious, and that partly was as a consequence of making the driveway out onto Grand Avenue one-way. We added spacing from the both parking areas to the property lines. We added additional green area and landscaping as requested by professionals in the board. We did add and designate a handicap space with a designated loading area and a sidewalk accessible to the building. That did result, I believe, in a relief from one of your, I believe it's a design waiver or, I don't know if it's a design waiver or a variance, which, because the parking area then creeped a little, crept a little bit further out onto Eighth Avenue in this area where, if you can see my virtual hand. And the benefit, obviously, from providing a relief there would be to add a handicap space as requested by the board. The portico share was added or reconstructed along the entrance to Eighth Avenue. Mr. Severese will go into detail about that. We added sidewalks to the building as requested by your professionals. In the refuse area, we added a four-foot-high vinyl fence as requested and demonstrated that five refuse and five recycling containers could be accommodated there. We added exterior curb as requested by professionals. There's an additional request that interior curb be provided. We would just ask that that, that the exterior be sufficient. Really, that's what holds in the pavement, and because the, we left the interior as no curb because there's existing grading there. We've added an additional 48 plantings and buffer plantings along 4.02, along the entrances and along the perimeter. We did note the tree save areas on the plans on Lot 4.02. I believe it was either the public or, or members of the board or combination requested that those trees be, excuse me, not removed. We addressed stormwater management. There was some discussion between Mr. Fichter and our office with regard to making sure that if, if and when 4.02, the vacant lots developed, that no additional stormwater management measures are necessary, and we were able to accommodate that by reducing the runoff from the site and looking at it as a whole. We submitted a report to his office, and I believe that it's to his satisfaction. I believe we've addressed the lighting. There is a discrepancy between your professionals' letters. We believe we've addressed it. If we haven't, we intend to and do not want to ask for relief from average foot candles. There, there is also, we didn't demonstrate it on our plans, but there is a streetlight at both entrances directly across the street. There was also a request to add a fence between the two lots, the newly created lot, 4.02 and 4.01, and we could do that as a condition of approval. Just to reiterate, we have a letter from Ameth County of no interest, and we do have free hold soil certification, and it, this project does not require CAF for approval.
So what we're looking at, eight, two, this rendered, we also have the plans that I just want to mark self to do that. If we can get the last revision date, and that is?
April 6th, 2022.
And that's the full set that had been submitted, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, what I want to do is just go.
Before you proceed, Mr. Harris, I'd like to ask Jason the question. Mr. Beadman, would you swear in our professionals?
Sure. Donna, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Jason, state your name, just for the record. Jason Fichter, Board Engineer. Donna, same?
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beadman.
Sure.
Jason, if the subdivision is approved and a new house is built on the new lot, how does that overall affect the overall stormwater management of the entire area? Is it something that each lot has to be reviewed again, or?
No, no, that's what Walt was talking about. The new stormwater management report that they submitted considered both lots, and it considered the undeveloped lot as developed.
Okay.
So if it was to be developed in the future, it's good to go by way of this application for stormwater.
We don't entertain any public questions at this time.
It addresses where the stormwater. Can you just clarify something so I know when you?
We don't address any questions right now from the public. It will come, believe me.
Can I get the lot number for 500 D.L.A. Drive? You're only saying lot numbers, I'm trying to follow the conversation.
Would you please, please hold your questions and your comments until such time is permitted?
So I won't be able to follow the conversation between coherently?
All right, please address the question quickly.
You keep using lot numbers. 500 D.L.A. Drive, what is the lot number assigned to it? So when you're, when I'm listening to the conversation, I know when you're referencing.
Ma'am, this application is for 503 Eighth Avenue.
Which backs up on 500 D.L.A. Drive. And so that's, so there's a direct ramification between the two.
Please hold your comments. That's a comment, that's not a question.
I apologize, which is why I asked for the lot number. So if it's being referenced, I know it's being referenced. And keep mentioning whether or not.
Yes, the two lots are, they were proposed to us this evening. I'll need.
Ma'am, this is an application for a subdivision. There's an existing lot now, they're proposing two lots.
It's Lot 4 that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry for that interruption. Please proceed, Mr. Harris.
What I'd like to do now is go through the reports that were generated, and I don't think there's a lot actually to go through. I think we've covered a whole bunch. If we can go to page seven. Oh, the, I'm sorry, the planners' report. Why don't we mark that? That's the updated planners' report revised May 4th, 2022. I think we're on B3, am I right?
Correct, B3.
Take a look at what's been marked as B3. We can go to page seven of this report. Here are comments in here. Certainly in letter B, design exceptions, which we would be requesting with regard to the western property line and the setback, am I correct?
That's correct.
With regard to comment C, we have added curbing as requested by the parking space. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
And in terms of the curbing proposed along the edge of the driveway, we're not seeking to add that because of grading issues, am I correct?
On the interior, we are, yes, correct.
If we continue on with regard to the section 4.2 on page seven, landscape and screening and buffering, 4.2A, there is a suggestion that we add that solid fence. We've addressed that, we have no objection to that, am I correct?
That's correct.
With regard to page eight, we're at 4.2D, minimum parking lot landscaping, again. We have done certain revisions, but a design exception is still required, am I correct?
We checked that before the meeting. I believe we exceed the landscape, the ordinance requirement. I believe we're almost 20%, whereas your ordinance, yeah, whereas your ordinance requires 10.
Are you including the other buffer strip?
We included, for the parking area, we included everything that was paved. And for the landscape area, we considered the salt tooth along here, this area in here, a three-foot section along here, and then a five-foot section along here, 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 and here.
Right, but the five-foot perimeter buffer is a separate requirement. So that should not be lumped together into the landscaped area. So that's why I wasn't, I wasn't including the buffer strip requirement in the parking lot landscaping.
Okay.
All right, so if it's not included, design exception would be requested.
Yes, yes.
In terms of E, the landscape buffers, there's been a recommendation using groups of three of any of the hybrid Hollies that are suggested here. No objection to that? F, we've revised a planned schedule to replace invasive with the common nine bark, am I correct?
Correct.
Street trees has been addressed, written in your testimony, correct?
Yes.
With regard to the next comment on Eighth Avenue, we have no objection to using the willows, am I correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's the location that Ms. Miller wants revised.
No objection to that, am I correct?
Correct.
The grand ave, the tree and poor condition, replace that, we're okay with that?
Yes.
And we're okay with the next comment correcting the proposed planting, am I correct?
That's correct.
Terms of the lighting, everything complies, refuse, everything complies. Going now to page 11, which is the portico, we'll have architectural testimony on that. I think that concludes comments in D3.
Can I ask a quick, easy question on that portico share? Walt, the, the column that's closest to Eighth Avenue, is that going to be clear of that parking space? It's going to have to be. Okay. I don't mean, I don't mean that to sound that way. I mean, Mr. Severese, unfortunately, he's in the, he's got, I mean, we have the parking area, so he's got to make it work around us, and I know he's an accomplished architect that will be able to handle it. So if the column, if the column can be toyed with to make it work, that's great. The reason I ask is if we need to push it closer to the property line, I figure we should probably address that. Read your mind?
Yes.
As a, as a waiver? I don't know.
I don't think it.
I don't think it's a waiver.
I don't think it needs a waiver, because the portico share is a permitted encroachment.
Okay.
But we just want to make sure, you know, we aren't going to end up, or Mr. Siegel's not going to end up with the same problem that this house has had for the last maybe 50 years of cars hitting the supports of the portico share, so.
But wasn't it also involving the fire truck access as well, not just the cars?
Well, we haven't actually heard any testimony yet about the design, but as far as the horizontal, where the columns are, there's, there's insufficient information between the site plan and the architectural plans to ensure that there aren't going to be conflicts between those columns and where the cars, you know, are actually pulling in or when it's time to snowplow or whatever. So, you know, on the site plan, it looks like the base of the column is like encroaching into the parking space. So, but the architectural plans don't really have the columns fully designed. It's a steel column, and it's going to be wrapped.
Oh, we actually need Mr. Seigle.
Just sort of coordinate.
So, so we'll get there, I think. But, you know, Jason and I just want to make sure that they don't have to do anything right now to maybe physically move the location so we don't have to worry about later.
But I think it's, like, we want to do a couple of things with the portico share. We want to save the architectural elements, right?
Right, so the first thing we're talking about though is the columns, and then, because they affect what Walt's designed on the ground. And then, I'm sure Mr. Harris will bring up Mr. Severese, and he'll talk more about the roof and address that concern.
We will.
Okay. Please proceed.
Going now to the inside report, which we can mark that as B4 right now. I think we've reviewed the inside report dated May 5th, 2022, am I correct?
Yes, I have.
As we go through this, page 24, we already previously agreed to the acquisition of approval, am I correct?
Correct.
Some floor elevations to show this in the plans. Same thing with number 13, the outbound markers, we've agreed to, am I correct?
Yes.
Number 14, recent bounce descriptions, we've agreed to that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Going to the development review, the architectural plans that have been provided will have testimony from our architect on that. Potential impacts, number 20, on vehicles entering from Eighth Ave. Do you see any potential impact from the driveway on vehicles entering from Eighth Ave?
Well, I think what Mr. Fichter's office was referring to, if you can see my virtual hand, is this, is this parking space. And again, this was a compromise in order to accommodate an additional handicap space. So although we do have a bit of a, we do have enough of an area to stack here off-street in case there's a conflict here.
All right, so there's sufficient room for that movement of that vehicle while I can be on the site, am I correct? Next comment, D22, the additional buffering was added to the plans, am I correct?
Correct.
Can you provide your testimony with regard to the percentage of landscape doing? Correct?
Yeah, I think we're going to just ask for a design exception just to be safe, but we will add it to the plan as a condition of approval.
24, with regard to the lighting, comment notes that streetlights have been added to the plan, and is that adequate, the lighting that we have for those driveways?
I believe we are, but if, if we need to go through this again with Mr. Fichter's office, we'll make sure that we do.
The average illumination levels within the parking area, note is made that an exception is required. An exception is going to be requested on that?
No, no, no exception, we will revise to comply, yes.
Very good. With regard to 27, about the sidewalk, we're leaving that sidewalk? Who are we doing with that?
So I think the concern is that there's, I'm not really sure what direction the board would like with this. There's both in front of this, there's slate as well as, as concrete.
But we're not making any proposed revisions to what is existing on that sidewalk, am I correct?
That's correct.
On to 28, parking space, we do provide the required parking spaces for this site, am I correct?
Correct.
And that is an increase to parking space than what had existed, am I correct?
That's correct.
This application brings it to comply to the required parking.
Yes, yes.
Number 30, the plus you park for five more space shall provide a buffer strip, minimum five feet. The revised plans improve the condition, although it's not the entire five-foot width, am I correct?
That's, we had that salt tooth, so there's some areas that are greater than five, some areas are slightly less. Average is out.
An exception will be requested for that part that does, is not getting, am I correct?
Correct.
Screening of the refuse areas and mechanical equipment, the only things that we worry about on the site is really the refuse area, am I correct?
That's correct.
And that's been screened, am I correct?
With both fencing and landscaping.
And we don't have any mechanical equipment we have to worry about, am I correct?
That's correct.
And lastly, sanitary sewer connections will be dealt with at the time that we provide this building, am I correct?
Yes, the current buildings have connections in the new one. The new lot would be subject to a connection fee.
So all the questions, I have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
I don't. Any water?
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, five minutes. All right, everybody. Let's take roll. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Brittany Drumlock.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
John Spolley.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
And Christopher Abelloni.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Let's continue.
Thank you, Irene. Sorry for that interruption, Mr. Harris, please proceed.
If I may, at this time, I call our architect.
Before we, we go on, first, we have to see if there's any further questions for Mr. Hopkins. Anybody on the board for Mr. Hopkins?
I just have two questions. How many parking spaces on grands are eliminated due to the Eighth Avenue?
There, I'll have to check that. There's two, so the two, we're losing two parking spaces on Grand and Eighth that we're gaining on-site.
Oh, you're losing one on Eighth? I thought the Eighth was over there.
Let's see.
Theoretically, from the subdivision, the new, the new house.
Oh, the new house, okay.
Right.
And of, my understanding is there should be 12 parking spaces. You've agreed to do 12 parking spaces, is that correct?
That's correct.
Of the 12, are you including the handicap as part of the 12?
Yes, the handicap spaces.
So who uses the handicap if there's nobody handicapped in them?
By lawyer, obviously. Yeah, this is the.
So then there may be people who have a car who will be able to park.
And for the, for the parking count, they meet the 12 requirements.
But it still meets the 12.
It still meets the 12.
It's one of those things within the code.
But I, I believe from the last meeting, Mr. Harris had requested that the parking spaces be numbered, right, for the people living in the?
I believe he did, and I'm not sure that made it onto our plans, but I'll make sure that it does, yeah. I do recall that.
We can number those spaces.
Then, then obviously you're going to be insufficient for the number of apartments, correct?
Not necessarily. We have.
Only 10 apartments.
There are 10 apartments. You know, ordinarily, you know, most of the testimony that's presented before this board is that, is usually one car per apartment. The code, though, provides that you need the additional parking spaces.
I understand you're meeting the requirement.
But not only that, realistically, if you have 10 apartments, you have 10 parking spaces, you're going to have another park.
All right, well, we can proceed. Anyone else for Mr. Hopkins?
One more question. So your plans are completely based on the assumption that that porch thing is not going to be on your site plan at all, right?
We are showing on our site. Yeah, it is on our site plan, it's this brown thing here.
The driveway portion of it.
We'll have testimony from your architect.
I know it says plan, though, that he has it. It just says proposed location.
Okay, but I'm not sure, I'm sorry, could you?
Is there any way that the column would be on the pavement?
No, we'll make sure that it's not, and we'll make sure. It is shown, it's like these little yellow squares here. We'll make sure that we show it with dimensions from the parking space when we revise the plans. that we show it with dimensions from the parking space when we revise the plans. Quite honestly, Mr. Savarese and my office were scrambling to get this in by a deadline, and we may have kind of mixed, missed each other a little bit, and now we're going to have time to straighten that out.
I just want, here.
But after this, you have approval.
Absolutely. It will not be on the pavement.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
In reference to the refuges, you know, it's good to see this one being closed. Are you want the private company picking it up or you're dependent on the city?
I believe, I think Mr. Sebo had testified last time to that. I don't recall what he had testified to. I think the city, because it's residential, I believe it's city pickup.
Okay, so if the city's going to pick it up, then somebody is going to have to be responsible for putting it on the street.
And he had it in his building super, as I feel for the building.
Okay, thank you.
He testified last time that, uh, it would be private hall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else on the board for Mr. Hopkins? For professionals?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Donna?
Uh, yeah, I, I, they've addressed my concerns.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up to the public now. For Mr. Hopkins, please, uh, come to the mic and whatever his testimony was today, you can ask questions regarding Mr. Hopkins' testimony only today. Go ahead, please come to the mic. State your name and address.
Enrique Wegel, 506 Eighth Avenue, across the street from the site.
Mr. Wegel, could you just spell your name just so we have it for the record?
Enrique, E-N-R-I-Q-U-E, last name Wegel, W-E-G-E-L.
I'm sorry, say that again.
W-E-G-E-L.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, first of all, just a, a comment that others.
No comment, just a question, just a question, only questions right here.
Okay. How many, how many units is in this, uh, existing, uh, drawing?
There are ten.
Excuse me?
Ten.
And, uh, I believe it's eleven. Can I say that? Or no, it's eleven. So why are we saying?
No, you're testifying. No, you cannot.
I cannot?
You, you cannot testify. No. You can ask questions.
Will I be able to at some point testify?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next question. Can somebody show me twelve spots in that drawing, please? Parking spots. Can you just show me?
Mr. Hopkins can do that.
Sure. Sorry, a little technical difficulties here. So we have six along here?
Six where? I, I cannot see six.
I'm sorry.
Maybe it's on the site plan.
I mean, the carport is.
Wait one minute, please, hold on.
It's a.
So that, can you, can you see the, the movement?
The handicap, one?
Yeah, there are six along here.
Show, why don't you identify each one? Do we under the portico?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Underneath, underneath the carport?
Yes, it's on the site plan.
Go on.
And then there's another six.
Excuse me, the carport is not, carport is not going to, it's just for parking.
It's, the carpet is up near, the portico is up near, so it's parking under. Please go on.
And then six along this property then. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay. Uh, I have another question. Is there any reason why in the new proposed lot, we're not showing the driveway?
Th- that will be subject to a design and a review by the city engineer when it's completed.
Yeah, but that's, that's once it's approved.
But we're not required. It's two lot subdivision. You don't do a site plan on two lot subdivisions, single family.
However, my question is, the effects that this subdivision is going to create on the neighborhood, we don't know about that.
By law, it's not required when you do a single family home, then you would cite, send an exemption.
However, to approve a new lot?
You're testifying.
Okay, I'm trying, okay.
Do you have any further questions for Mr. Hopkins?
Will there be a driveway in the new lot?
I would expect there would be, yes.
That's not a question that you can ask yet.
I'm very frustrated. Okay, I'm done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
First name and address, please.
Lisa Boyer, 500 Deal Lake Drive. So that's the property that backs on this.
Yes.
So in regards to runoff, has there been consideration of her testimony in terms of runoff for the two lots? Has a runoff issue towards 500 by the change in construction been considered? And if so, what are the ramifications?
Yes, it's been considered, and we've shown a reduction in post development runoff.
Can you clarify that? Will we have a runoff problem onto 500 Deal Lake Drive into our backyard?
You just indicated that there's a reduction.
In terms of the parking, you testified that you're going to have two additional s- spots added into the onsite parking, but lose two spots from the street parking. Has the ramification to the residents of the area who do not have parking and cannot utilize your onsite parking been considered? And once again, what are the ramifications and what are the considerations, and how is that going to be dealt with, in that we already have a marked shortage of parking in the area?
Any ramifications are speculative in terms of what may happen in the area. But as you are, you have right now insufficient parking on the site. So in effect, what you're doing is taking two spaces, people that maybe park it on the street, and putting them on the site. So you would have a net zero in terms of any of that.
I would have to disagree with that, and since you're.
You're, you're testifying.
Well, no, well, okay. And then let me phrase it in the form of a question.
You can ask a question, but you can't testify.
As much as I'm being speculative.
If you're increasing the amount of residents in the, in, on the lot because you're increasing the amount of units that then are currently there, so that's going to increase the amount of people living.
You're still testifying.
No, I'm getting to the question. Once again, if you're increasing the amount of people, but you're reducing the street parking.
We're not increasing the amount of people. There's been no testimony that there's going to be any increase of the number of people living on the site where there's a multifamily block. There will be another house, a single family, for which there'll be parking provided onsite. But there's been no testimony, no evidence of any increase of the amount of people that exist in multifamily use.
So it's not going to be more than what are the current amount of units?
No, there's no others.
There is no increase in number of units in the current site.
All right. And then lastly, has there been, again, with the parking, particularly that, that faces on the top part, that would be facing 500, is there anything to keep the lights from shining into 500? I can't see if that's a wall structure or anything. Or are we going to have people pulling in, and there, as they pull in, their headlights are going to be shining into our apartments, not to mention the noise and the potential danger if they overshoot?
We, we do have a land, we do have landscaping along there that would exceed the, the headlight level.
Any retaining structure for safety?
No.
Any consideration of retaining structure for safety?
No. They're, they're going to be putting in wheel stops, if, if that's what you mean, male.
That would help.
Actually, actually curb, actually curb along there.
Curb is proposed.
Okay, and there will be, you're saying landscape sufficient to keep the lights from shining into our windows?
Correct.
Because it's, it literally, I don't know if you're familiar, it literally backs up onto, we, everybody has.
Again, you're testifying.
There'll be a time you can testify.
Okay.
Right now, there's questions for him.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public for Mr. Hopkins? Just his testimony, please.
Yes, this is just his testimony. I'm Chanel Flores. I live at 506 Eighth Avenue.
Can you just spell your last name?
Flores, F-L-O-R-E-S.
Thank you.
Uh, my question is, um, you mentioned that there is a landscaped area that's being added to the site outside of the, um, the prescribed, uh, setback that is required. Within those, I know, and I know you're asking for a design exception within that, what are the plantings that you are considering? And are they part of the stormwater management, uh, plan, or are they, uh, plantings that you've come up with on your own?
They, they were designed to match the current trees that are there and? Nope.
So in this area, I, I assume this is where you're , we're talking about Mrs. Flores? Ms. Flores?
Uh, just any of the landscaped area that you said you are proposing that is already falling.
We're proposing over a hundred and fifty, forty-eight plantings. So which one specifically are you?
Can we put that shit up on the screen?
No.
What do we?
So of those plantings, my question is, do they are, I know you said you're, you're mitigating the invasive species on-site, but what are you planting that can reduce some of the other issues that some of the other people here tonight have, such as stormwater runoff or water management? Are they, uh, plantings that can act as, um, you know, rain gardens, or are they just arbitrary boxwoods? What are they?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to have, go through the actual landscape.
That would be great.
All right, so when you're looking down, am I correct, this is part of A, three for identification, am I correct?
Correct.
And it's the landscape plan that we've come up with, you've come up with for this property, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, let's explain the types of trees and plants that are going on-site and where they're going on-site. So we have better clarification on that.
Um, okay, we're.
You want them up to be able to say?
That would be great, yes.
I'm going to hold, I'll hold it up here.
So we have a variety of trees along the perimeter. Uh, some are deciduous, some are coniferous. Uh, we have, I mean, do, do you want me to go through the species?
Let's go through it.
Chinese scholar tree, scholar tree, wildfire, black gum, willow oak, eastern red bud, dogwood, Stevens holly, and then we get into the shrubs of juniper, ninebark, Japanese yew, compact inkberry, bar harbor juniper, teller red cedar, and a willie turf. I believe there's been some suggestions to modify, I think, the hollies, uh, which we would, of course. And as far as stormwater management, this is not, uh, uh, this is not considered a major development. What we've been able to accommodate the reduction in, there's actually a reduction in, in impervious because.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Has any of this been, uh, in this particular landscape design or use of trees on the, uh, various strips of, of grass, has any of that been run by Tom Pavinski and the Shade Tree Committee?
No, he doesn't have jurisdiction over that, not on private property, only on city property.
But I'm talking about city property. Is this on the green strip? On, on some of the green strips there are, correct?
None, none of the proposed landscapes, landscaping, um, is in the public driveway.
None of it?
Except, except for one, two street trees.
Two street trees.
And so we've asked them to match the species that are already on that street.
And that's what I'm referring to.
And so that's the only thing that, yeah.
So they are matching some of the trees?
Yeah.
That's correct.
And then on Eighth Avenue there.
And, and what are these? Are they, but I did see something about red maybes as well.
Uh, no red may, red bud, eastern red bud.
Eastern red bud.
Willow oak.
Willow oak, okay.
Yeah. Um, so, and I don't know if this will help, but maybe. So the landscape design that Mr. Hopkins has for the site is designed to satisfy the buffering and screening elements of the ordinance. So there are evergreen shrubs and trees, deciduous trees to provide shade. Some of them are more ornamental. None of the plantings are designed to address stormwater management. They're not in a topographical situation to act as a rain garden, and they're not suited to act as the sponge that you're looking for in a rain garden. Um, they're not required to be as well. Um, but they do serve the buffering and screening requirements of the ordinance, and that's going to be the value. They had also proposed in a previous version, uh, a type of shrub that is elicited invasive species. They've swapped that out. They're not going to use that species anymore to meet a, um, drought tolerant plant instead.
Was there a fence proposed as well, Donna?
They've agreed to add a solid fence along the new property line between the parking lot and what the new house's front yard basically is going to be. So that'll provide a more efficient, comprehensive screen for headlights.
I have one more question. I don't want to.
Please, please, for Mr. Hopkins' testimony only.
Oh, yes, yes. So, um, my other question would be, and I'm, and it's right on the property, new proposed, I guess, property line. Um, what is to prevent either of these, uh, future owner and current owner from removing any of those trees in the future?
It's all the same owner.
Oh, so even the subdivision will be, will be owned by the, by the same owner?
Well, the proposed lot 4.02, I can't say what's going to happen to it, but.
Well, but that's my question, is there any protection of those trees that you're proposing on the lot, or on the lot line to remain?
The trees that are being proposed on the lot line are part of 4.01, not a part of the site.
Why did you shake your head, though? Is this not all owned by Mr. Siegel?
They are all, it is currently.
Well, that's what she's asking, though.
In the future.
Yeah, but we don't know what's going to, we cannot propose what happens in the future.
What, what she's asking is 4.01, those plantings.
Right.
Along the property line, those are on 4.01.
No, I just wanted to clarify that.
And I also.
It's still owned by Mr. Siegel. The whole property is owned by Peter Siegel.
Okay, and I cannot ask any questions about point 4.02, which would be, what would be the future of the hollies?
We don't know what the future really is.
Okay. So even though you're, you're showing it on your plan as.
Right now, it's just to determine whether there's a subdivision.
Okay.
No, but they have testified that they are proposing to build a single.
A single family, yes.
That would be in compliance with.
Correct.
The requirements of the zone. If they don't comply with the zone requirements, then they'd be back here for a variance.
Correct.
Or not these guys, but whoever's building that house.
Okay. Okay, I, um, I think that's on, oh, I have one more question. Um, have you consulted any historic, uh, historic?
Preservation.
Preservation references for the Portico share?
That, that would not be part of my testimony.
You can ask that question of the architect when he comes up.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public for Mr. Hopkins? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's, my name's Brian Keelan. It's Keelan, K-E-E-L-A-N, and address is 500 Deal Lake Drive. Um, I believe there is testimony to the removal of two parking spaces on Grand Avenue for the new drive aisle. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Um, how wide is that drive aisle?
Uh, it actually was reduced at the suggestion of the board. It is sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
What was it?
Twenty-four.
And how wide is the access aisle from Eighth Avenue?
Uh, would be a similar width. It is twelve, and that's existing. Uh, would be a similar width, it is 12, and that's existing.
12, right, which I believe to be standard one-way traffic aisle. Is there a reason for the wider 16-foot exit aisle there?
Yeah, the ordinance requirements with regard to the angle of the parking spaces.
And what are those requirements?
I, I don't have all of them in, in, in front of me right now, but we comply with it.
Is there a reason that that drive aisle could not be 12 feet?
Uh, because of the ordinance requirements.
Okay. And how large are the spaces that you're considering on-street parking?
I'm sorry?
How large are the spaces that you're considering for on-street parking?
What do you mean?
It's not their consideration.
Is that not what they're, they're showing individuals? Those lines don't exist.
We don't control on-street parking.
They, they don't control that, that's strictly the city.
No, but he's saying, how do you know it's only two spaces?
Correct.
What, what size is the on-site, on-street space?
Uh, I can look that up, but I don't, I don't think that's disputed by any of the board's professionals.
I think they're typically 23.
22 or 23 feet.
But again, that's, that's beyond their control.
So I, I understand that the size of the parking space is beyond their control, but they're displaying something on this drawing that's presented and, um, testifying that only two spaces will be removed as a result of these driveways. Three, including the potential single-family development, correct?
That's correct.
So I think they're in full control of the size of parking spaces that they're developing and claiming, and testifying against how many spaces will be lost.
No, we can only control the driveway, inside the driveway at 16 feet. If you were located, that's why it was, it would impact two parking spaces.
And how did you determine it would only be two parking spaces?
Because the parking space is 23 feet and the drive aisle is 16.
And so my question remains, are those shown at 23 feet?
That's the ordinary parking space, but if you're doing a 16-foot driveway and the driveway goes right between at most two spaces, then it's gonna be two spaces. There's no way it's gonna impact three because it's only 16 feet long.
So my question was, are those shown at 23 feet? How did you determine?
The logic is, most parking spaces are 16.
There are no parking spaces on that street.
Huh?
There are no parking spaces on that street, they are not delineated.
But, but normally it's our parks in a 23-foot parking space. So if the driveway just happens to be in the middle of two spaces, alright? As you're pulling, what, into, out of there, then you'll lose two. Not gonna lose three. Logic dictates that if you're pulling out, and as you're pulling out, there's one space here and one space here, and those are gone. Those are two parking spaces.
So, to be clear, to answer my question, are those spaces drawn at 23 feet?
22.
22.
Okay.
In accordance with RS, we used RSIS as a standard.
Still two parking spaces.
And how far are they drawn from the crosswalks where you start to count these parking spaces?
50 feet.
That's 50 feet from the crosswalk. The 22-foot space...
I'm going, what's the relevance of this?
The relevance is that...
I guess he's trying to determine how many parking spaces have actually been lost, Mr. Caris.
Correct, it's not, it's not 50 feet, but...
I understand your question and the point you're making, and it's appreciated. Um, we will keep it in our thoughts as we go to decide on this application.
Okay.
Please proceed with other questions.
Alright. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public for Mr. Hopkins? Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
I'm gonna drive for Mr., uh, for Mr. Savarese here.
I would object, you had the opportunity.
Please listen.
I don't think with the, the original question I asked was answered. How many units is there in that prop, existing property?
The answer was 10.
Sure, 10. Welcome back, Mr. Savarese.
Hi, I'm Mr. Stephen. We might have a pleasant mother's day.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Savarese, I swear you're in.
Yep.
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name and spell it for the record?
Michael Savarese, S-A-V-A-R-E-S-E.
Thank you.
And as you've entertained, you have before the board many times.
Many times.
Many times, I hope you accept your predicament.
Thank you very much.
Before we get started, I just want to be clear in terms of any political contributions. Mr. Savarese, um, do you swear affirm that you have not made any political contributions to any elected official to the city of Asbury Park in conjunction with this application or any other application?
I do.
I just want that to be clear, seeing that he was brought, I normally submit these disclosures as part of the application, but remember, he was brought in the middle of the application. I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you, Mr. Caris. That's unusual.
You're required to do it.
And usually you sign off on it in the beginning, but...
You do, you send it in as part, but seeing that you...
But I appreciate that.
I'm a pitch hitter.
I just wanna make sure that everything is being accounted for.
I understand, thank you, Mr. Savarese. And then please proceed.
Mr. Savarese, you're familiar with this application?
Yes, I am.
Had the opportunity to review it and to look at the site and go over property in terms of adding, uh, certain additions to it, am I correct?
Yes, I am.
And please tell me the scope of the work that you did with regard to this application.
We were asked to come in after the last meeting to design, expand, and give our opinions on how you would put the portico share back and expand it to make this work with having the parking spot underneath the portico share and having the driveway going through it and being as safe as possible.
So before you proceed with that, do you have knowledge of, from a historic preservationist's knowledge as an architect, Mr. Savarese, to, to save these architectural elements of this portico share?
Yes, I've done a lot of work in Lockaw, I've done a lot of work in Allenhurst, a lot of historic preservation work for both towns. Uh, we had to do Asbury Park historic work, but, uh, I've done a lot of projects at Asbury Park.
Please proceed.
Okay. So, uh, to answer that first question, go back to your site plan and zoom in. So when we were given the site plan that was developed out of your last meeting, we played around with the sizes and what to do with the columns for the portico share to make it as best proportionally as possible. Uh, we came up with a portico share that was 28 feet from column to column, 4.5 feet to the building, and a portico share that was approximately 12 feet wide. So if you look on the drawing, you'll see that the curviness around the parking spots. The first upper left, left one is in the plant bed. The lower left one is in the plant bed. The other two are in the plant beds by the house. We actually slid them a little bit further up to, uh, with that north up, I'm not sure. To the top of things.
Yes.
So we slid them further up to the top of things. We believe that this configuration is not gonna be a dangerous configuration, it's gonna fall outside the site. If not, uh, when they lay this out, you may have to adjust a inch there and a inch here, but this configuration of the 28 to 12 works.
And will this allow, the, the new size of this portico share, will this allow a fire truck to enter it?
Yes, because it's right, it's to be wide open for the holes. So once you, the fire truck that is true, that's true, the 12 for drive, it's wide open.
The height as well as going to accommodate the...
I believe the height is, we need to double check on the height.
I think you should.
We're at 12.6, I know the height's supposed to be 13, 13.6, but we're trying to link that sopit along. And then we measured that sopit ourselves with a tape measure, we're, we're not, not transit. But, uh, we will double check that when this is being built, and we have to put a harder sopit out, but we'll do that. But we're hoping we don't have to. If we can, we'll be grounded in love.
And what type of columns will you be using to accentuate this portico share?
We're using steel columns encased in a fiberglass covering, sitting on a pier that's gonna be a brick pier with two bollards in each corner to make sure everybody does hit it, hit the bottom first. Uh, we made the decision, and we saw in the report by the planner, they're asking us to put both ornamental pieces back with the gable.
We'll, we'll get to that in a minute, let's just first identify the plans, have that before the board. How you designed it, and then we'll go into the recommendation.
So the first thing, we designed to make sure the columns were sitting at the right place, that were safe. We took out the old pier and...
And is that reflected in your plan, your architectural plans that are dated April 6, 2022?
Yes.
And what we're gonna do is then we'll mark those as A...
Three.
Four.
Four.
I'm sorry, April.
Yeah.
A four, because our architectural plan is the date of April, what did I just say, since 2022. Okay, go on.
So, uh, we are taking this, the portico share sopit line, facial line, and continuing it out, making it go approximately 28 feet to...
I'm gonna hold this, sir, if you can, you know, you guys can see it off.
You also see it on the other.
Have it paired up?
Uh, no, they don't have it. So, basically, we have 2610 clear, the overall structure is 28 feet, and it's fourth and sixth between the column, single column at the house and the single column of the portico share. We are removing the old gable end that is facing Eighth Avenue. We're putting, we're rebuilding it back into our, our new roof. We decided, well, we did this, this is so long, it would be nice to see a hidden roof here and not rebuild the gables at the original end. But it's been brought up in the report that you guys would like to see that. Gable end, we can make it a gable end.
We can add that detail.
Add that same detail on the side. I thought it would have bore it. Since it's all prominent, this building has a turret, if you can zoom out. So you see the hall elevation?
You're in there.
So since we have a turret at that end, and we have, uh, hips on the other sides, and mostly the, the gables are prominent places, so we thought the prominent drive-in and the prominent space on the backside of the house would be replaced with the gables. And that, to me, the correct design for that would have been hip at that end. But if we don't, we wanted it to be a gable, it could be a gable.
And have you taken into account, like, if somebody accidentally hits those columns with their car, how would that handle, uh, some car striking it? Would it withstand the...
Uh, we believe with the bollards in place correctly, it should withstand it. Obviously, if somebody goes at their 100 miles an hour, it's not gonna withstand it.
No, of course not.
But at a 10-mile, 15-mile hit, it should withstand it.
And it's concrete around and there's steel in there also, correct?
Accidents happen.
Yes.
And what we're looking at on the screen is the rendering that you did, right?
Right, correct.
And we're gonna mark that rendering as A5 for identification.
We also did a render from the, from the backside. On the side, I guess, the backside, I'm sorry.
Why don't we show that?
And again, because we saw the hips on the dormers and the hip on the other side, we thought since this was not a prominent entry, that this should not have a gate, this should have a gable door, it should have a hip end, a hip end.
And the view that we're looking at is looking east?
Looking east at the parking lot, right?
And that's with the hip, right?
That's with the hip. So I think it blends in with the building, it's done correctly. Uh, I think it's good to have, I think it's historically significant, the ability of this size and character age probably would have had a portico share, that's why it's there. Also, you can see it in the pictures from the report, from the planner, what it was. So I think it's good to be back.
So, questions on here?
I have no further questions for Mr. Savarese. Does anybody else on the board have any questions for Mr. Savarese? No? Alright, board professionals?
No questions here?
Oh.
Why?
Alright, I'm, I'm probably gonna need you and Walt to collaborate a little here.
Okay.
Um, the bollards. Where exactly are the bollards supposed to be?
On the front side of the columns.
In relationship to the curb?
Can we back, go back to the cycle? We have the circle.
Yeah, but that doesn't show me where the parking space curving is.
I was hoping that Walt would pick it up.
Yeah, I know, that's, I get it, I get it, I just want us to all...
Show you on here?
Sure.
We want it here, we want it here. This is actually inside the curb, this, like I said, this probably shouldn't have a lot of, that's actually here. But we're making sure the cut, here and here. This one is here and here, inside the curb, inside the curb. Then, in the bottom, the bulk of the grass, this one's in the grass, that's in the grass. And these two are on the, they're the grass on these two front sides. So the bollards are inside the curb.
And you said they're forageous thick? Is that what your...
Forageous, yes.
Is that common for bollards for residential structure?
Hmm?
Yes.
And fill with concrete here. Yeah, that's it, we got the pier, then you have these two steel, things that are stunk around about six feet, they're about about three feet, rounded, uh, hopefully painted, not, not the truth of color, hopefully white, and it'll be fine.
Yeah, I'm really hating the idea of the bollards. I mean, we're going through all this trouble to do this portico share and save the architectural detail and...
I would, I would, I hate them too.
And, you know, see these columns, they're, you know, decorative columns with the decorative base, and then we're gonna stick crappy metal bollards.
I just like the idea that they're protecting in case different accidents do happen, we just said that. And being white, I don't think it'd be that offensive. And I think it's a lot better than, like, we'll tear a weapon.
I can't understand it. Is there any way to, like, make them below ground, Donna? No?
That's not gonna do what you want it to.
Yeah.
I mean, they do make them retractable, but we're not, we're not gonna go there. Um, you know, ideally, it's, you don't put the column where it's gonna be in conflict, where it's gonna potentially, you know, if it's that close of a concern, then, you know, you don't add something in front of it to close it.
Like I said, the columns, the columns are in the beds, they're not on the, they're not on the pavement, but...
I was more curious to know, um, about how you, so is the size of the portico simply based on these dimensional requirements of the, of those parking spaces in the driveway?
Right. I was given where that parking spot was, and that's how we sized it to be minimum size. If I could, I could push that portico share a little further out, and that would help you get rid of the columns on the, the left side. But I think it gets to the point where it's, it's bigger, that gets the sillier once it's being too wide.
Too wide.
Right. They're always adding more steel, like, make the steel deeper, but it's still just looking too wide.
Is there anything else that we could propose, Scott?
Is there anything that could be done with the curving? You could make the column stronger. You, you'd have to fix the skin on it if it was ever hit, but the column would stay put.
Yeah, and I'm not really concerned about the column itself, it's, because I think what they proposed is gonna be sufficient for, I mean, you know, it's a low-speed event, right? Mostly, for the most part, we presume it's a low-speed event. But, you know, it's the, it's the fascia that's gonna get destroyed repeatedly. And at some point, we stop fixing it, and then stuff looks bad, and then we have a code enforcement issue or property maintenance issue. And we don't want to create that problem, you know, so...
When you say fascia, you're talking about now the height, or you're talking about the bollards?
I, I, I'm talking about another column. You know, you have your, your wrap and your shingle and whatever.
That's why I kinda like the white bollard, because you can't get a chance to hit the wrap, on the bottom wrap.
So it's, yeah, either the portico has to get extended into the side yard a little bit more so that it's got the elbow room or, um, it becomes a skinnier parking space, I don't know. Could we do a compact space?
That's you.
You're asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
I don't know if the ordinance permits that in this zone.
But we always, we see them when they're not supposed to be, but I don't know. So that's my concern, if you guys don't share, you know, or if you're okay with bollards, then I, I'm just...
I mean, my friend just had two cars go through her house, so I'm very, I'm not, I'm not to make a joke. So I'm like, very for the bollards right now, because people are idiots, so...
I just went, just did a report on a car going through a doctor's office, this is two weeks ago, so it's, it happens.
Um, I did have another question on, on the design now. Um, is it common to have this, I can't remember the name of it, thing, go on one side of the house and not the other?
Portico?
Yeah, the portico.
Yeah, typical, because you have a carport, it's usually the carport was where you unpacked your car, walked your packages up to your room, or went to the, was like the servants quarters, and the main door, they don't want, you know, I don't know cars.
It was the height of the apartments.
Right.
Just to drop your packages off and...
Or the horse and buggy, that's it.
Yeah, that is, it's only on one side, I've never seen this before, so I can't, so I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
And the true definition of a portico share is something you drive through, not park under, to get to the backyard.
That is true, but the spot was there, so...
So, the true definition...
Well, if we eliminate the spot, then...
Whatever we're building here is not a portico share, because we are parking underneath it.
So we eliminated the spot, then the columns wouldn't be any question?
Now we're talking, let's eliminate the spot, do that.
Well, I do...
Well, I just wanted to make it a compact space, because this is gonna take it out.
Mr. Segal's not here, we can't talk to him about that. How do we reduce the spot? Uh, that's what I thought I was...
Well, the problem that you have is then we're not complying with the government.
Six and a half. I know. If we didn't self-divide the lot, we'd have enough space.
I have a question, is there, is there any concern in that first spot with the pillar? That if somebody parks there, they're not gonna be able to open their door and not gonna get out of there?
Yeah. It's not, where it falls, it'll fall near the door.
I think many people are asking that question regarding that first spot. It is a concern.
It's troublesome.
Yeah.
It, it falls closer to the hinge than the opening.
Alright.
I tried several models.
We did it on a computer, we didn't draw it, but we did it.
All right, I think we've come to a deep pack.
So should we open for public, or are we still debating?
Well, unless the board has any further questions for Mr. Savarese, I have no further questions.
I just want to highlight one thing Mr. Savarese said is to, the height, to make sure it either complies with the fire code or get a letter from the fire official saying what's proposed is okay. We talked about that offline. I think we're good on that. I just wanted to highlight that.
I think that's a valid point, yeah. Either way, whether they sign off on it or.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open up to the public now for Mr. Savarese. Please come to the mic, state your name and address, and direct your questions regarding Mr. Savarese's testimony tonight.
Enrique Huelvo, 506 A W. I heard you say that the carport is wide open. Is that correct?
Correct.
And when I stood here a few minutes before, I was told that two cars would be parked underneath the carport. Am I, am I, like, missing something?
When we say wide open, it's open to air. Cars can go in it, and one car or one other, I think it's one or the half, I think it's one car.
Okay, how wide is that new proposed?
Yeah, it's only one car that parks underneath the carport.
This is on your closed structure.
No, it's open structure on all three sides.
How wide is the proposed new carport?
12 foot.
12? 12 foot? And you're going to park a car diagonally? And you're going to let new cars coming on out?
Well, it's 28 feet.
No, I said, how wide is a new proposed carport?
Why should go through the.
Why don't you put your plan back here again?
So this is 12 feet this way?
Oh, no, that's okay, the depth.
28?
28 from column to column.
28.
Column.
So this is the spot that's partly under the carport?
Right.
This one is right down. So your car is right here, and it's like right on, not at the pillar there.
So according to the parking rules, whatever, diagonal parking spot occupies how many feet of depth? I'm just trying to figure out how much space is in that for traffic.
That's true.
Is it 30 degrees or 45 degrees?
Looks like 30.
It's 45.
And are these five sides of the spots complying with the requirements?
Yes.
Okay, so the question is, again, maybe you can show me, six parts, including the ones that are under the carport?
That was not his testimony. He's only testified to the portico share and the design of the portico share.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Mr. Savarese?
Chanel Flores, 506 Eighth Avenue. Will there be a superimposed site plan and architectural plan in this area presented at some point?
No.
I'm sorry, what?
She asked for a superimposed plan.
Architectural and site plan. There is, it's in the. I had trouble downloading the items that were in the zoning board links.
Which plan are you looking?
Did you see this already?
The architecturals.
I'm sorry.
The site plan shows the parking much better.
There's not much.
Yeah, this doesn't show, this doesn't show any. The site plan shows the parking pretty clearly.
Yeah, and I just wanted to see, like, how the columns.
The column is here, 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 outside the block.
Right, okay.
Look up there, you can see the same way there, outside the block in here.
I guess I'm maybe looking for, like, reference images or some sort of indication of what, what else is proposed, and you said there's like a brick pedestal that should be.
In fact, you can have.
I'd like to see the document, so I'm just right here. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for Mr. Savarese?
Hi, I have a couple of questions and I apologize.
Your name and address?
Sure. Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I guess I came here late, so if people ask this question, I apologize in advance. But right now, the way that the parking lot is in the back, it faces our building, but.
Okay, you're testifying.
I'm testifying, I'm asking a question.
And you just only answer questions of this witness, you're cross-examining this witness and his testimony.
Cross-examining this witness.
He didn't testify to the parking. So nothing about parking, only about portico share.
I apologize.
That's okay. Anybody else from the public for Mr. Savarese's testimony regarding the portico share? All right, we'll close publicly the questioning. All right, Mr. Carris.
My understanding is that we'd like to question Mr. Siegel also. I apologize, I didn't call from the last hearing, I thought he was drunk, and that the public had the opportunity to question, apparently not. So I would agree that we would have to bring him back next time. I don't plan on having my professionals, so if there are any further questions, I can leave the public, have some full opportunity to question them.
Yes.
So I would relieve them and then bring him back to finish up his testimony.
I hesitate by not having Mr. Savarese or Mr. Hopkins here, only from the perspective that we may end up having to question ourselves again, Mr. Carris. I'm not very concerned as much for the public to question them, but the board, yes. So I would say, I'd be very careful in saying that I do not want them present.
I didn't say that I don't want them present, I said I'm relieving them of any other obligation. Now, they provided testimony, all the questions have been answered. If something comes up from Mr. Siegel's testimony that then implicates the design.
But you're also eliminating our chance to speak to them again, so.
But if that does come up, certainly, then I'll have them present.
You would really want to carry again?
What's that?
You would want to carry the application again because Mr. Savarese.
I want to get this done. All right, so if it's the board, since Mr. Siegel has to come back, I'll have them present, but I just want it to be clear. I don't want to go.
And I want to be clear.
I don't want to go over again and have them.
Nor do I. That's why I'm saying, I think Mr. Savarese and Mr. Hopkins should be here.
But, as I indicated, if something new does come up, they'll be here, all right? But we're not reiterating or going over again all your tests.
I 100% agree with that. But I cannot guarantee that there wouldn't be additional questions.
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting, Irene.
The next available meeting we have is June 28.
Is there any way we can get her before?
Well, we cannot at the end of this month, and then June 14 is it? I think we already have two applications, so I think that's about it. Mr. Carris?
Who would be in Carrie? We can't go first. Here's the. If we're being carried, we can't go first. If we're being carried, we can't go first. So June 28?
All right. All right, so I'll make a motion to carry 503 Eighth Avenue to June 28, 2022, without further notice.
One second.
I have a motion by Christopher Abelloni and Esteban Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Dribble?
Yes.
Jennifer Potter?
Yes.
Ken Flit?
Yeah.
Wendy Glosson? John Spelling?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Abelloni?
Yes.
Thank you. Application carries to June 28, 2022, without further notice.
And make a motion for it during the meeting.
Just a second.
Yeah, Mr. Carris, you're confirming that you'll agree to extend?
Yeah.